Okay. Everyone ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
with liberty and justice for all. That threw me way off. All right, well, here I got one more thing to read. Under the Governor's Executive Order Number 5 issued on March 16th, this public meeting is being held via remote participation. Please note the agenda and supporting documents are on the Village's website at www.homer-glenil.org, and then this meeting is called to order. So, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Present.
Trustee Caprio.
Present.
Trustee Rogers.
Present.
Trustee Suisse.
Present.
Trustee Pazmino.
Present.
Trustee Backle.
Present.
Mayor Yucich.
Present.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? We're going to go to reports and communi-- oops. I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd, 2020 Village Board Meeting.
I saw motion.
Trustee Backle.
I'll second.
Trustee Suisse, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Number two, is there a motion to approve the amended minutes being processed tonight for October 14th, 2020 Village Board Meeting?
May I say move?
Trustee Caprio.
Second.
Second.
Second is Trustee Gray. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, nope, we have a roll call.
Voice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed, motion carries. Next, reports and communications from Mayor and other officers. I'll start off, today is an important that we stop and honor all of our veterans. Due to COVID, we were unable to have our annual veterans luncheon. However, we did deliver 85 care packages to our local vets. A special thank you to our trustees, business, and staff who helped with these special deliveries. And the Veterans Day care packages, they were sponsored by the Village of Homer Glen, Beth Rogers, State Farm Michelle Kirfin, SNL Truck and Equipment Repair, Kono's Corn Maze, Costco, Jewel, Homer Glen Foundation, and Homer Township Public Library. It took a lot of work to get this stuff done, so we want to thank Sue Stylin, Amy Blank, Regina Robinson, and Linda Hurdler. And as for the deliveries, we had Village Manager Kerry Freeling, Trustee Carlo Caprio, Trustee Ruben Pazmino, John and Regina Robinson, Sue Stylin, and myself that went out and delivered them to the veterans that are out there. And it actually, it made me feel very, very good that we were doing what we were doing, and I think we should do this more. But it also took me back for one gentleman, the first one I went to, and I was hoping it wasn't going to happen after that. He had told me that he appreciated everything we were doing. He said, "He's been out of the service since 1975, and this is the first time that anyone has ever done this," and I thought he was going to start crying. And I thought it was just wonderful that this is how sentimental they are about it, and that we did do what we did. So, kudos to everybody. I think it's absolutely fabulous that what you guys did do. Next, retired flag collection box. Thank you to Trustee Keith Gray for designing and creating the Village's new retired collection box, now outside the Village Hall Community Room entrance. Retired flags may be disposed of properly by placing them in the box. So, with that, I'm set. We'll go to the trustees, and we'll stru-- try to, we'll go with Brock. Trustee Backle, do you have any reports?
No reports this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Beth, do you have anything for tonight?
I just want to, you know, reiterate how much I appreciate Trustee Gray and all of the work that he did to get this box together for the veterans. And thank you again for staff and everybody that participated in helping the vets. It means a lot, and I know that this board has been great supporting the vets as much as we can, especially during COVID. I think that this was the best thing that we could do. I do miss the Kono's celebration that we've done in the past. That was, I mean, that was amazing, but the responsible thing to do was what you all did today, and I appreciate it. I wish I could have participated, but again, I've been traveling a lot, so I'm just trying to be responsible in maintaining my social distancing, so hopefully I contributed as much as I could. But again, thank you, Trustee Gray. It just means so much, so much.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure Trustee Gary is in complete agreement with it, because he does do a lot for the village. Are you all set, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll go to Trustee Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have an official report, but I would like to say thank you to all of you. It certainly pales by comparison. It was something that was needed, and somebody asked me while I was making the box, and I said, "You know, there's a lot of people out there who sacrificed a lot more to make sure that that flag flies properly. It's the least I can do to help to retire it." So, you know, that was definitely something from the heart. I would also like to, in your wake, say thank you to all the veterans out there, because, you know, this is a special day for veterans, for our services. I have many family members who are active service and retired. My son-in-law is active service Marine. So, thank you to all of those currently serving and who have served in the past. We do appreciate that. And the last remark I'd like to make is that I'd like to just point out that, you know, we're starting to see the new branding showing up. It's showing up right now on our monitors, showing up on our packet pieces, and I think this is looking great, and I just wanted to say to staff, you guys are doing a great job rolling this out, so. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Trustee Gray. Trustee Suisse?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Suisse. Trustee Caprio?
No report, Mayor, but I would like to just add to the congratulations to the village and the staff for the veterans' care packages and all those contributions. It was very well received. Every house I went to was answered by the homeowner and/or the spouse. They were extremely grateful for what we had done. And one gentleman said the same thing to me. He has never gotten anything in all of his years, and so he was very pleased with us doing that. So, great job by the entire village.
Thank you, Trustee Caprio. Trustee Pazmino?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go to Village Clerk.
No report.
Village Attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Officials?
Just a quick one, Your Honor. First and foremost, like everybody else has said, thank you to our veterans for all they have done for us. I also want to thank those of you that support our vets and support our service members that are in service now. Thank you to the mayor, to the board, to village staff for all they did for the veterans. As well, I'd like to thank the community for working along with us. It's getting dark a lot earlier. We've been getting a lot more calls for suspicious activity, and we want to thank the public for their information and their help in keeping these streets safe. And that's my report.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Next would be Village Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple things real quick. I just wanted to point out tonight that we are using our new, recently-installed cameras that are located now in the Village Hall. We have three along the back here, and we have one here, so we're hoping that we'll be able to get better quality for our board meetings and any additional meetings that we end up taping in the future. I also wanted to point out that we are going to be recommending cancellation of the November 24th and the December 23rd Board Meeting due to the upcoming holidays, which then means that our last meeting for the year will be on December 9th for the Village Board. And third, there, we have recently installed today at Gauger and 159th Street, a mock-up sign of the Village Entry Gateway Sign. It's just made out of plywood, so it's not the final sign, but it gives us the opportunity to see it in the built environment, and so I encourage everyone to go out and take a look at it before we make the final determination on the size and everything. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Where was that at, I'm sorry?
Gauger and 159th Street.
At the new gas station. Okay. All right, next would be public comment. Wayne, you're the only one that signed up for today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's two things I wanted to say tonight. First of all, you know, I guess I'm going to get you emotional too, but I'm one of the veterans that received the care package, and I want to thank the village for the care package, because it means a lot to the veterans that, you know, don't get much recognition, especially when we came back from Vietnam. And consequently, you know, we really appreciate what the village did today. Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that I also want to thank the village for putting those mutt mets up on, I can't think of the neck. Where is it?
Culver.
Culver, yeah, Culver Park, thank you. I take my dog around to all the walking areas, and invariably, I'd start walking her. I'd get down past the parking space, you know, where they have the one trash can, and I'd get halfway down my 15-minute, 20-minute down to walk, and she has to go. So, I finish my walk, you know, I pick up the, obviously, I pick up the poop, finish the walk, and then I go all the way back, you know, and I'm carrying this little bag. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. And thank you for your service too, Wayne. Okay. Next is Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Village Board and will be enacted by one motion. Is there a motion to approve the following items? Consider for approval, the accounts payable for the period of October 30th, 2020 through November 12th, 2020, in the amount of $167,135.61. Two, consider for approval, payment of the Village of Homer Glen's September legal bills from Mahoney Silverman &amp; Cross LLC in the amount of $9,263. Three, consider the approval payment of the 2021 Municipal League Risk Management Association, IMLRMA, contribution invoice in the amount of $46,459.39. Consider for approval, payment of Pay Estimate #3 from Klaus Brothers, Inc. for the Act of Core Swings Project in the amount of $9,869. And number five, consider the approval of Treasurer's Report of Cash and Investments for the period ending October 30th, 2020. Is there any discussion? And I need a motion.
So moved.
Trustee Gray?
I'll second.
Trustee Backle, discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out the last item, item five, is October 31st, 2020, just to clarify that.
Okay, I screwed that up.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino.
Aye.
Legislation and action items. One, acceptance of the village audit for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020. Is there a motion to authorize the Village Board to accept and receive the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020 village audit? And I know we've got to get you to go over it, so we'll do that before they vote on
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. I'm Ed McCormick. I'm the partner with Mueller and Company, they're your auditors, and I've got with me tonight Kevin Bissell, Director with the firm. And actually, Kevin's been the one that's been very much involved in the audit process, so I'm actually going to let him do all the, he's already done a lot of the hard work, so I'll let him, you know, get the credit for it. But just in real quick summary, the audit went very well. John and his staff did a great job. I think you'll be pleased with the results in the report, you know. Couple things that, you know, Kevin, I don't want to steal his thunder, will point out, but overall, once again, I think it was a real good audit process, and you as a board should be very pleased. But no further ado, I'll let Kevin step up and...
Thank you. I believe everyone has a copy of the financial statements for the year. So, I'd like to start out by going to page Roman numeral seven of the statements, and that shows the certificate that was awarded for the fiscal year '19 presentation. So, I wanted to point that out to everyone. And in talking with John, the current year's statements will be submitted for review for a similar award for next year. So, the next thing I wanted to go over are pages Roman numeral 10 through 12 of the report, and that's the independent auditor's report, and that's our addition to the financial statements. And that report states that we have audited the financial statements of the village as of April 30th, 2020. It goes on to talk about responsibilities of both management and the auditor. As far as management's responsibilities, management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. This includes the design and implementation of internal controls related to the preparation and presentation of the statements that are free from material misstatement. As far as our responsibilities as auditors, our responsibility is to express opinions on the statements based on our audit, and we conducted our audit in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards. That requires that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. This involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about amounts and disclosures in the statements, and the procedures selected depend on our judgment and our assessment of risks of material misstatement. And in this process, we consider internal controls relevant to statement preparation and our assessments, and that's so that we can design appropriate procedures, but not to express an opinion on the effectiveness of those controls. In addition, we evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies, estimates, and the overall presentation of the statements. On page Roman numeral 11, that gives our opinion of the statements. And basically, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements of the village are presented fairly in all material respects at April 30th, 2020 in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles." The report goes on to mention some other required and some other information that is included with the statements, as well as some prior year comparison information. The report also mentions a required report on internal controls over financial reporting and our tests of compliance. That's included with the statements. Now, this report describes the scope of our testing and the results of the testing, but it does not provide an opinion on the effectiveness of those controls. I'm going to go ahead and move now to page Roman numeral 13, which is the management's discussion and analysis. The MDNA, as it's called, is unaudited, but it's a very good summary of the year. It explains some of the important information in the financial statements. Now, some of the financial highlights, as you can see, assets and deferred outflows exceeded liabilities and deferred inflows of the village by $64.1 million at April 30th of 2020. About $47 million of that is an investment in capital assets, and about $7.7 million of that balance is restricted for capital projects and public works. The increase in net position for the year was $2.6 million. Now, that increases down a little bit from the prior year. And the reasons for that are that there were some larger increases in general government expenses and public works expenses as well. On the fund side, the village had fund balance of $17.5 million at April 30th of 2020. Fund balance decreased by about $4.3 million from the prior year. Now, this decrease relates to the early retirement of the 2012 general obligation bonds, and those bonds were retired three years early. Page Roman numeral 15 gives a summary of the assets, liabilities, and deferred amounts for both the current and the prior year. And as you can see, net position increased approximately $2.6 million. Cash is down a little bit from last year due to those additional debt payments, but all liabilities are down as well for that same reason. At year-end, the village had $9.4 million of unrestricted net position that can be used to meet ongoing obligations of the village. Page Roman numeral 16 shows a table with details about the changes in net position. As you can see, revenues were fairly consistent with prior year, and as I mentioned earlier, general government and public works expenditures were up from last year. Page Roman numeral 18 gives an analysis of the village's funds at April 30th. At April 30th, governmental funds reported ending fund balance of $17.5 million. $4.1 million of that is unassigned and available for ongoing obligations of the village. $8.2 million is restricted or committed for various purposes. And as I mentioned, fund balance decreased $4.3 million, and again, that was related to the additional principal payments that were made on the debt. On page Roman numeral 19, this covers some information about the general fund, which is the village's main operating fund, and it had a surplus of about $750,000 for the year. $720,000 of that was transferred to other funds during the year as well. The motor fuel tax fund increased by almost $400,000, and that was related to a new motor fuel tax revenue that was available this fiscal year. The park and recreation fund increased by almost $600,000 for an ending fund balance of $3.1 million. And the home rule sales tax fund showed a deficit at year-end, but that was related to the closeout of the debt service fund. Now, the debt service fund was closed near the end of the year upon final payment of the bonds. The capital project fund had fund balance of $9.2 million at April 30th. $6.8 million of that is restricted. And fund balance in that fund decreased a little bit more than $1 million in the current year, and that related to spending on capital projects throughout the village. Page Roman numeral 19 also gives some information as far as budgeted expenditures. And I wanted to mention that the general fund expenditures for the year were nearly $340,000 less than had been budgeted for, and that's approximately 4%. Reasons for that were there were less general government personnel costs and less public works costs than were anticipated. Page Roman numeral 20 shows a table of capital assets for the past two years. And as you can see, capital assets are fairly steady from year to year. The additions for the year were offset by the depreciation expense that was incurred during the current year. Page Roman numeral 20 also shows a long-term debt table for the current and prior year, and as you can see there, it shows that the bonds payable are paid off as of April 30th of 2020. Page Roman numeral 21 discusses some of the upcoming initiatives for the village, which is good reading and good information. So, that basically covers the MDNA. The statements themselves follow the MDNA, but the MDNA really gives a good summary of it, and so that's why I covered that portion of it. I would like to go to page 17 of the statements, which is where the footnotes start, and I wanted to point out a couple of the more important footnotes for your information. On page 24, you can, it gives some information about the village's deposits on hand, and you can see that the village's deposits of $580,000 were either fully insured or were collateralized with a letter of credit at April 30th. So, basically, there was not much risk involved with the balances on hand, so I wanted to point that out. Pages 26 and 27 give some information about the capital assets of the village. I talked a little bit earlier about the capital assets, but that gives a little bit more detail by type of asset of the activity for the year. Page 28 shows, again, a table of long-term debt, again, in a little bit more detail than was presented earlier. And you can see now that with the bonds being paid off, that the primary liability is now the I M R F pension. Page 29 gives a table of fund balances at April 30th, and it gives some detail as to how those are broken out. As you can see, the village had $17.5 million in total in fund balance at April 30th. $7.7 million is restricted for certain purposes, and those are highways and streets and capital projects as well. $5.2 million is assigned, and it's assigned for parks and for capital projects. And $4.3 million is unassigned and is available for, again, for ongoing operations. The rest of the notes are devoted primarily to the I M R F disclosures that are required. And I did want to point out, on pages 37 through 41, that gives some information, required information regarding the pension. I wanted to mention that all required payments that are required for I M R F have been made, so I felt that that was important to point out. The remainder of the statements are more detailed schedules of the information presented, comparisons with budget and prior. Pages 48 through 64 give some good statistical schedules that give important information and 10-year trend data. So, those are basically the financial statements. Also wanted to mention, pages 65 and 66 are that internal control letter that I mentioned earlier for your review. So, again, that's kind of a summary of the statements. There's another letter that went along with the audit. Before I go to that, I wanted to find out if there were any questions about the statements
Do we have any questions here? So, we got a great audit again for this year.
Absolutely.
We do every year. Yes, I know, a lot of hard work goes into it, and at the end of it, we show that John's done exactly what he's supposed to, and sometimes better than he should. So, thank you very much. Does anyone else have a question, though?
No, are you done?
I have one more letter that I wanted to cover, and that's basically a summary of how the audit went. It's the conclusion letter, and this is a required letter, and it points out some significant matters. So, I just wanted to cover a couple important topics that I felt were worth mentioning. One of them is that we encountered no difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. Attached to that letter are the journal entries that were posted for, you know, for the year, and those journal entries were reviewed and were approved and posted by management. And we are also pleased to report that there were no disagreements that arose during the course of the audit. As Ed was saying, we wanted to thank John and his staff for getting us the information in timely and organized manner, and everything was very well put together. So, I wanted to thank John again for that. And that's basically the conclusion of the audit. Any questions on that letter?
I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to say, to reiterate what you said, to thank staff, thank John and his team, and Carrie and all of the village staff. But I'd also like to thank everybody at the board level, too. You know, we do, we often pass off the victory lap to those who do all the hard work, but, you know, we do have a great budget here. This is, I know this is dry reading, I've read it, and it is, and it's hard to get through, but we do have something really to be proud of here. We have a great village, we have a great financial position, and, you know, that's a story that's not told often enough. We have no debt, especially given this year. You know, we had right-sized our budget earlier in the year based on, you know, really good financial input by John and his team, and Carrie and her team, and this just bears that out. So, you know, we're good financial stewards here, so.
Yes, we are, and I thank everyone for that. Thank you, John, again.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Kevin and Ed McCormick. They're, it's a really difficult and strenuous process, and they make it really as efficient as possible, and I really appreciate it. They're really good to work with, and thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in another year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, I need a motion to approve it? Trustee Caprio? Trustee Pazmino? Okay. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Abstain.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number two, is there a motion to approve a donation to the Lockport Fish Food Pantry in the amount of $2,500?
I still move.
Trusty Suisse?
I'll second.
Trusty Backle? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trusty Pazmino?
Aye.
Trusty Caprio?
Aye.
Trusty Suisse?
Aye.
Trusty Rogers?
Aye.
Trusty Backle?
Aye.
Trusty Gray?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, is there a motion to approve the proposed holiday shop and dine Homer Glen incentive program in the amount of $25,000?
I still move.
Trusty Caprio?
Second.
And Trusty Gray? Is there any discussion?
I have a question on the program where it says, where it says, okay, it's good for purchases made at personal services, shopping and/or dining establishments, but not gas stations. That includes your Meyer, your Jewel, all your food stores and for groceries, too?
Yes, it does under this, under the current guidelines. If you guys wanted to change that, that would be a policy decision by the board, but yes, it would be eligible for any of those excluding the gas stations.
Well, according to, it seems like the Meyer and the, you know, those stores don't need the help, I don't know, because they're doing so well with groceries, the liquor stores, but, you know, I was just curious if it includes everything like that. Okay.
If you wanted to exclude the big boxes, we could do that. Obviously, when we go out to purchase the gift certificates, we won't be purchasing from the big boxes, we'll be purchasing them from our local and small businesses, but we did leave, really more for, I think, just to encourage as many people to participate in the program as much as possible. But again, that's a prerogative of the village board.
All right, and the reason we're doing this is the COVID-19 pandemic has significantly disrupted business activity. To respond to the economic challenges that Homer Glen businesses are enduring, the village has implemented several initiatives to assist local businesses. The latest proposal, discussed briefly during the CARES Act workshop on October 14th, is an incentive program for shopping and dining local during the holiday season. Residents and non-residents will be encouraged to shop at Homer Glen businesses and submit the receipts to the village. Shoppers that spend over $100 at Homer Glen businesses will be entered into a drawing for $250 in gift cards to Homer Glen businesses. The village would purchase the gift cards directly from local businesses, and the proposed amount to be spent on the program is $25,000. So with that, is there any other discussion? And I need a motion.
Yes, I have a motion.
Go ahead, Ruben.
I think Trusty Suisse has a very valid point. Is there a way that we could sway this so that it impacts more of the small businesses instead of the big box?
I was going to concur. That's exactly right, I believe.
Big boxes are always open, and everybody else is closed. I would imagine it'd kind of be a no-brainer.
I would make a motion along the same lines as Trusty Suisse and Trusty Pazmino, that the big-box stores be exempt from this, and we would utilize these gift cards for more of the smaller local businesses that are certainly hurting.
So then what we pretty much need to do is, we need to line item, because who are we going to not go to and who can they go to? Because at the end of the day, I don't want them bringing receipts from the places that they shouldn't have been, and we say, well, sorry, that doesn't count. So, I mean, that's...
But if I'm understanding the village manager correctly, the gift cards to be distributed upon us receiving the receipts, receipts can be from anywhere, basically, right, except for, I think you said, gas, but the cards that you're going to buy will not be from the big boxes. They will be from the local stores and the local merchants, so the smaller ones presumably. So while you can walk in with $100 worth of Menards receipts to be eligible for the program, the card you would receive would be for, not for Menards or for a Home Depot, would only be for the other smaller local shops.
So the $25,000 would be spent...
Buying those gift cards. So if you walked in with $100 worth of Home Depot or Menards or Meyer or something, you'd still be eligible for the program, but the card that you would receive from the village, you'd have your choice, I assume, but those would be bought from the smaller, more local, more not, I hate using the word "small" because I'm not being pejorative at all, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that these are more of the local businesses. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think it's because it does, it encourages people to continue to shop in the village, be it in a big box, because we still do get tax revenue from that, and we need that, but it also helps to convert some of that activity into activity at some of the more local and more non-regional, non-chain-type places, so.
Yeah, I guess I would concur with that in the sense that when you say "big box," we all figure out the wires, the hospitals, the cars. But ACE is a large company, but it's local, they own.
Yeah, so we would, if you wanted to define big boxes, we would use the same definition that we did when we were doing some of the other assistance programs, like for the grants, where if they were over a certain threshold in terms of sales, they were ineligible, and that would, that would kick out Myers, it would kick out Home Depot, Jewel...
Menards.
Menards. But ACE was still under that threshold, so they would still be included.
I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, I'm seeing that on here. Purchase of gift cards at big-box stores are not eligible.
Trusty Pazmino, does that?
Yes, it does.
I must say, I was talking about when you first started, so I didn't catch the first part of it. Is that good?
Very good, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is a good program. Hopefully, people will participate. I mean, we've been encouraging people now for nine months to shop locally, been doing it for years, really had a focus on it for the last nine months, so hopefully, this just, you know, really drives that point home.
Yeah, I think this is a great, thoughtful program.
And it will help the small business. Okay, any other discussion?
Well, I just wanted to bring up, which is a good thing, too. It applies to residents and non-residents shopping in the village, so that's, that's great.
Yeah, because either way, they're going to come back and spend it here.
So we're not making any...
And then some.
No.
Well, no, if we already know that it's not going to ask for being purchased, the big boxes will be out, and then the rest of it would go to restaurants, liquor store, so on. Okay, so... No? Beth, do you want to say something?
No, I did, but I would just concur with what Trusty Gray said. I was going to say what he said, but he said, I agree with what he's saying.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trusty Backle?
Aye.
Trusty Suisse?
Aye.
Trusty Rogers?
Aye, I'm sorry, I'm trying to mute it so that, you know, you don't hear any background noise, but aye.
Trusty Gray?
Aye.
Trusty Pazmino?
Aye.
Trusty Caprio?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval to lease the vacant property on the corner of 151st Street and Cream Road. The vacant property located at the corner of 151st Street and Cream Road is currently under lease by the Homer Township Road District. The lease will end December 31st, 2020, and will not be renewed. The village has used this property for additional parking for the Homer Community Festival and most recently for a drive-in movie. The property at 151st and Cream Road will provide the much-needed additional parking for the Homer Community Festival and other events, as witnessed at the 2019 Trunk or Treat and Homer for the holiday events. Additional overflow parking is needed when the village has a large event turnout. Attendees of these large events will often seek parking at the Homer Township Library, the adjacent Homer Township Administration, and sports parking lots, and the neighboring subdivisions. The leased property would provide the much-needed additional parking for Homer Community Festival and other events. In addition to events, the vacant lot may be served for events while Heritage Park is under construction. So I need a motion.
I still move.
Trusty Caprio?
I'll second.
Trusty Backle? Any discussion?
Just a little background, let me, we have continued to use this lot for several years, but under the festival, maybe as chair. We have used it for overflow with many other events. It will come in handy when the park is under construction, all the things you said. We are paying basically taxes on the lot with this $435 a month. It's gone up a little bit over the years, like we originally started, we originally used it originally at $350 or somewhere in that range, and it's gone up very little each year thereafter. We do have to agree to one item, which is in the lease, that if the property sells and the owner does not want us to leave that lease that in the month, then we have to deal with that at least that time. But other than that, we would like to, essentially, consider purchasing that property as it would be in line with everything else we've got going at 151st, but at this point in time, the purchase price of that property is a little on the low. With all respect, the owner has been very gracious to us, and the Highland Department has a great job of keeping that property.
And I think it's great that we do it, because otherwise, if we end up parking down Bangstons, which they don't charge, but then now we're paying for buses to go back and forth. So this way, the people are nice and close, they don't have to worry about waiting for a bus to come and get them. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trusty Suisse?
Aye.
Trusty Caprio?
Aye.
Trusty Gray?
Aye.
Trusty Backle?
Aye.
Trusty Pazmino?
Aye.
Trusty Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve a proposal from V3 Engineering Services to prepare a Phase 1 study for the west extension of the Harrows Trail in amount of $24,877.69? As the board knows, the village continues to seek expansion of the village's Harrows Trail system. One such trail extension would expand the western limits of the Harrows Trail to Coachman Lane in the Saddle Brook subdivision. The potential extension of the Harrows Trail would allow residents to access Heritage Park from the recently completed trail connection to Coachman Lane. The proposed extension is shown on the attached aerial as a dashed blue line. To pay for the proposed trail extension, the village would seek to obtain grant funding such as CMAQ funds, the same funding used for the previous trails constructed in the village. In order to qualify for the grant funding opportunities, a Phase 1 study must be completed and approved by IDOT prior to any grant applications being submitted. The Phase 1 study provides preliminary engineering and environmental review for the proposed project, such as a trail extension. The village obtained a proposal from V3 Engineering for the preparation of the Phase 1 study for the proposed west extension of the Harrows Trail. V3 Engineering is included in the village's recent board-approved engineering firm list and as-needed engineering services. The proposed cost by V3 Engineering to complete the Phase 1 study is $24,877.69. So I need a motion. I still move. Trusty Gray?
I'll second.
Trusty Backle? Discussion?
Mayor, this...
Mayor?
Yes?
Go ahead, Beth.
I'm sorry. I think this is great. I just want to encourage staff, and I know you all have been really good about it, but just to keep the Park and Rec Committee in the loop on this, because, you know, we do try to make sure that we're on top of it, trails, it's part of our committee, we want to be involved in it as much as possible, so just to keep us in the loop on it.
We can do that.
We had, this came before the Public Safety Committee last week, we had an extensive conversation regarding this, and we pretty much tried to cover every angle here, and I believe it passed unanimously, so I just wanted to pass that along.
I have a question for Director Salomovich. To the west of Coachman's Lane, is that a private lot, or is that continue of the continuation of the ComEd right-of-way?
The ComEd right-of-way continues, it goes quite, quite a distance. It goes past the, I don't recall the school name, down there, and then it actually, when it gets close to Lamont Road, it actually turns, goes north, and then kind of heads towards 355. So there is kind of an extensive ComEd right-of-way going through there.
And would that be considered for future phases? I know that you probably don't have the crystal ball that I'm asking you for, but, I mean, we would continue to, you know, if you look at the way this is right now, once you get past, once you get past Saddle Brook Lane, you're on a street if you, if you didn't build the path. So it only makes sense to build that path from Saddle Brook Lane to Coachman's if you're going to continue on.
Yeah, at some point down the road, I believe as part of the Master Trails Plan, there is, I know in the past, when we had a separate Trails Committee, this was discussed, to extend it all the way down to eventually to 355, where the Forest Preserve District is going to be constructing what is called the Veterans Memorial Trail System, which is within the 355 corridor.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Trusty Suisse?
Aye.
Trusty Caprio?
Aye.
Trusty Pazmino?
Aye.
Trusty Rogers?
Aye.
Trusty Backle?
Aye.
Trusty Gray?
Aye.
Accepting a bid proposal from Austin Tyler Construction, Inc., to complete drainage work for the 2020 Drainage Improvement Program within the village of Homer Glen. Upon incorporation of the village of Homer Glen in April of 2001, the village inherited a large number of drainage issues throughout the community. In order to effectively manage these drainage issues, staff compiled a list of the issues, which currently include over 50 drainage issues, small to large, and has ranked these drainage issues according to various criteria. The village has been working to address four drainage products, projects as part of the 2019 Drainage Improvement Program. These four projects were identified on the village's master drainage list and are located in the Meadowcrest, Statler Ridge Estates, Country Woods, and Chickasaw Hills Sixth Edition Subdivisions. The Country Woods project has been completed. The Statler Ridge project is currently under construction, and due to the complexity of the drainage issues, the Meadowcrest project is still in design phase. Engineering for the Chickasaw Hills Sixth Edition project has been completed and has been combined with the completed engineering plans for the drainage project on Eagle Ridge Drive in the Woodbine Estate subdivision as part of the 2020 Drainage Improvement Program. So I would need...
I still move.
Okay, Trusty Caprio? Trusty Gray? Well, the only thing that I didn't say on it is, the price of this is $677,777.55. So is there any concerns, any complaints, any issues?
No, also that it covers many, many areas of the village, and there are very issues that is a project well-deserved, a project that's, a lot of people have to deal with today.
Yes, it will. So is there a motion? Oh, you already did the motion. Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trusty Gray?
Aye.
Trusty Backle?
Aye.
Trusty Rogers?
Aye.
Trusty Suisse?
Aye.
Trusty Caprio?
Aye.
Trusty Pazmino?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, accepting either 3,000K, 2,200K, or PC Amber LED Street as a standard color of the streetlights within the village of Homer Glen as measured in degrees Kelvin. So the village is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of streetlights within the village. To accomplish this task, the village has contracted Lions Pinner Electric Company to maintain the streetlights. In mid-2019, staff attended a seminar offered by ComEd regarding their energy efficiency program. This program provides... This program provides technical assistance and incentives to partially offset energy efficiency improvement costs. Public sector offerings provide for common improvements such as LED lighting upgrades, heating and cooling systems, and more. To take advantage of the energy efficiency program, village staff is seeking to upgrade municipal-owned street lighting, and the goal of this program is to upgrade the existing streetlights within the village from the existing high-pressure sodium lights to light-emitting dioxide LED streetlights. During the preparation of the workshop presentation to the village board, staff met with Trustee Suisse and other members of the Environmental Committee to discuss the streetlight upgrade program. The Environment Committee is concerned about the color of the streetlights, that they were installed along Heritage Circle, and the future streetlight replacements throughout the village. As compared to the color of the existing HPS streetlights, the color of the streetlights along Heritage Circle is 3,000 K as measured in degrees Kelvin. The typical color of the HPS lights is approximately 2,200 K. Is there a motion?
Isolated.
Trustee Caprio? Trustee Pazmino? Discussion.
Yes, Mayor.
Well, I just wanted to know what's the motion for, 3,000, 2,200, or PC Amber? Are we to choose right now, or is...
Yes.
So, did you have a preference on the motion?
Yeah, my motion would be to approve the, as the Public Services and Safety Committee also sent a recommendation to the board, the 3,000 K that is currently installed within the park limits of the Ring Road and the...
I would not go that way. I would not say, I think everybody has to have a discussion before you automatically say 3,000 K, boom. I think it has to be a discussion first, and then we go back and consider the motion for whatever level things have, you know, whatever level you want. Because I was at Public Service in Safety Committee meeting, other than Mr. Selimovic and Mr. Robinson and the two chairs, nobody said a word. And some of the comments were very personal in matter, so I would not take a lot of... I would not put a lot of credit into their recommendation for 3,000 K. So with that being said, I think I have a statement that we sent out to every... to the board, and for the record, I would like to read that statement, because we did not have a quorum at our last EC meeting, so we were not able to get a formal recommendation at that moment, because that meeting took place last week, October 28th or something like that. But for the record, I'd like to read this before we go on with deciding what you're going to do without hearing any background or any history.
Okay.
The statement from the Environment Committee, putting up the test lights has...
Maybe this will help. Putting up the test lights has been very helpful with converting to LEDs and to removing the unshielded 14-inch drop lenses in order to get to an equivalent color of HPS without a harmful and polluting white light. There were a couple of exceptions which, in our committee, which chose 2,200 K LED, but the majority of the Environment Committee members concurred that a PC Amber LED is the closest equivalent to our 70-watt HPF streetlights that we have and should be the standard used for Homer Glen street lighting, as it is in accordance with the street lighting paragraph in the ordinance. The spectrum of poor outdoor lighting influences and causes many negative aspects of light pollution, glare, and additional sky glow, from human health to animal life and biological processes. The idea of incorporating white LEDs and changing from HPS lamps saves less energy than what is being touted. The white LEDs, without using PC Amber LEDs, dramatically increases light pollution and harmful effects per scientific evidence. To the eye, the 2,200 K CCT correlated color temperature appears whiter than HPS. In terms of dark sky impacts, it will have about 40% to 50% greater sky glow than HPS and about twice the sky glow impacts of a good PC Amber LED. The Flagstaff Dark Skies Coalition, along with Dark Sky Partners, states that white LEDs, E.G. the International Dark Sky Association and the Illuminating Engineering Society, recommended 3,000 K LEDs have lumen-for-lumen sky glow impacts three times greater than good PC Amber LEDs. Homer Glen's advisor, who is well-known throughout the world as an expert because of his studies of glare and light pollution, recommends PC Amber LEDs for Homer Glen. To prevent degrading our skies, we must keep our standards higher. We need to be a leader in this... You know, we need to be a leader, not just accept what IDA says is okay at 3,000 K. But that, we must keep our standards higher was the end of the EC statement.
So the part about not accepting IDA, was that part of the EC statement, or that was your...
I didn't say they didn't accept IDA. I'm just, I read in the paragraph...
I was asking where the EC statement ended. You just mentioned the line that said, "We should not accept what IDA says about 3,000 K."
No, that was just my...
That was your...
Yeah, that's why I said, the statement ended, we must keep our standards higher.
And backtracking, I'd just like to address that part of it. Why do we belong to IDA, and why do we pay dues to them every year? We've used them since the Dark Skies Initiative has become a thing in Homer Glen. We've always pointed to International Dark Sky Association as our subject matter experts. We belong to their membership, their, whatever you call it, their group. We pay dues to belong to that, and we use them. They say, International Dark Sky Association says, that these lamps will conform to our international dark sky community standing. They say that the fixture... I'm not 100% certain if it's on their fixture seal of approval list, but my understanding is that if it isn't already, it's in the process of being investigated to be included on that, and that fixture itself also is recommended by Christian Luganbuehl, is that how you say his name? I'm sorry, Mr. Luganbuehl, as the preferred fixture. There seems to be some difference between the additional sky glow, the additional output of these lights between International Dark... the International Dark Sky Coalition, Dark Sky Partners, and the International Dark Sky Association. We have always pointed to the International Dark Sky Association. They have sanctioned these lights. We have used these lights out on Heritage Circle. To my knowledge, I believe those are about two years now they've been out there, we've not had one complaint about those lights. We had, recently, we've started to see some new development in the village in the way of the square at Goodings Grove, the townhouses subdivision that is being built up there, which is a great thing to see, because we've not had a newly-planted subdivision in the village for, you know, 12 or more years. They specifically stood at that podium and told us that when it came to the lighting for their streets, which they will not be dedicated streets, but they wanted to make sure that they got the lighting right. They said they pointed to the lights that we had installed out on Heritage Circle, and they said they understood how strict our rules were and how cumbersome some of the mathematics and the equations can get. So they were happy to have a standard that they could point to and say, "You've used this, we're going to use this, so we know we'll be compliant." I feel, for me, I don't personally like the PC Amber. I have investigated these lights in these places. I don't think there's enough difference between the 2,200 and the 3,000 to warrant foregoing the ComEd grant money that is out there. ComEd will not reimburse us for anything we spend on 2,200 K lights. They will reimburse us on the 3,000. The International Dark Sky Association sanctioned 3,000 Kelvin lights. I also like the fact that by having a standard finally, that the developers can point to and say, "We understand now what Homer Glen wants. This is it. Give them this, and we'll be okay." If we change this right now, we're going to have, you know, and again, I know this isn't the Environment Committee's outlook, and it's not necessarily Public Safety and Services' outlook, but it is the development outlook, and the development outlook is going to have developers looking at us going, "There they go again. They can't seem to stick to their own standards. They change them all the time. How are we supposed to do business in this town?" So I like the fact that we now have a standard that people can point to.
Well, you had a standard before, too. You know, what you're doing is you're going against the ordinance where the paragraph, there's a complete paragraph just on street lighting. And that paragraph, I'll read it again, "Any luminaire used for street lighting shall be fully shielded 70-watt HPS or lamp equivalent to HPS in CCT as measured in degrees Kelvin." So that is your standard. What we have in, and according to advisors, according to people, a 3,000 K LED is not the equivalent 3,000 K in a other fixture, because you could actually see the... Here, I'll show you the... I mean, 3,000 K is all, they're white. There are all sorts of white compared to what we have out there. I know at Public Safety, they said, "Oh, they look like heat lamps. Oh, they look this way." You can't let personal opinions... You can't allow personal opinions to reign over this. And I want to know, because this was some time ago, when I said, did you, did everybody, did all the trustees look at both places?
I didn't, yes.
Okay. And some time ago, I said, "You have to take a look what it looks like in a regular neighborhood and go on Stone Oak Way." Did you do that? Did you do that?
Yes.
Did you do that? And then you went to the corner of Boulder and Appleway, and what was your thoughts? How did those colors look to your eye? Tell me.
I think the PC Ambers are way too dim. The 2,200 doesn't significantly...
I'm talking about what's over in a regular neighborhood and not what you see in a park. No, no, Pebble Creek, Stone Oak Way.
Oh, not at all.
Did you go to Pebble Creek?
I did. And again, what you're saying is, you know, that we shouldn't have a personal opinion on this, and I think this is going to probably affect everybody personally anyhow, so I think that's kind of a moot point. But, you know, Trustee Suisse and I have had many discussions about lighting over the years, many of them very productive. I think we always see each other's ways. And we both did agree recently that we've had some lighting issues in the village that were bad. You know, just recently, we've had one developer come, go beyond the limits, and they were reined back in. It was brought back into line with what the village standards are, and I told you at the time, I didn't like that lighting. I thought that was way over the top. It was way too harsh. It didn't, it was not additive. To me, lighting should always be additive. It should bring something to the game. It should not just be there like you and the Environment Committee and the International Dark Sky Association, all of them have said that it shouldn't be a race to just get bigger, brighter, and better. It should be, to me, lighting is aesthetic, lighting is safety, but it should also be, it has to work with us. I think the 3,000 Ks that are out on Heritage Park or Heritage Circle right now, I think they work. I think they work also when you can see right next door in the township sports complex, they have, I don't even know what it is, I think they're trying to light up the entire town from those things some nights. So when you see the balance between those, and I live in the subdivision right next door, there's no glow from that, but I can tell you, in the fall, when the football's going on, that's all I can see, or baseball, too, is the township lights. You never see any effect from what's happening in Heritage Circle. So like I said, I think the PC Amber ones are way too... And by the way, I did go through Cedar Brook. The one, the first time I went through Cedar Brook, it happened to be a foggy night, which was an even more bizarre thing, because, you know, it kind of like made these bubbles of light, and they are so dim, for starters, they could barely reach the ground, and then it was very orange and kind of almost eerie. So I just didn't like those. And like I said, the 2,200, I just don't think there's enough of a difference between the two, between the 3,000. You know, if at some future point, if we do approve the 3,000 tonight, and at some future point, if ComEd says they want to expand their program and either go down in their scales, then we can look at saying, "Hey, do we want to open up a range now?" But for right now, I think 3,000 is a very good. I think going too low is also not going to serve us well as far as the safety issues go. But right now, I think 3,000's a good place to start, and as far as the fact that IDA sanctions these lights, that to me says a lot.
Yeah, so let me please speak on behalf of Public Services and Safety, because I don't believe either Chair, myself, or Brock were rude or demeaning to you at all. I was really a personal preference thing for me. It was a safety thing for me. The lights in my subdivision are semi-low, they're not like the PC Amber, they're somewhere between, imagine, 200. You can't even see the kids down the street, even when driving. It's a very sensitive issue for me from a safety perspective. The lights that are on the Ring Road, Heritage Circle, they are very directional, they are movable in that direction, they do not bleed out in that fixture, they are dimmable. So there's a lot of bonuses and benefits to those lights. I have not heard, yet, Trustee Gray stole most of my thunder, we have developers who are happy that we have, or we have a developer, we're going to finally maybe settle on a standard, maybe not. HPS lamps are going to be extinct at some point. Dark Skies already approved the 3,000 K. The ComEd rebate, that's $20,000 if I'm not mistaken, in rebates that we could gain from going to the 3,000 K. We go to the 2,200, we throw $20,000 down there. To me, those are a lot of reasons why, and the fact that nobody in either side of the subdivision, or the three sides of the subdivisions, have complained about the lighting of the park. I think they're ample. I do agree with Trustee Suisse when you said, putting those lamps next to each other sort of tells a different story, because you go from light to dark. And if you look at the colored photos of how it looks out of basketball net and things of that nature, you know, they're not, these aren't facing forward, these are facing downward. I just, it's a personal preference and a safety thing for me. You know, I agree that environmentally we have to sound in many areas. You know, these commercials today, all the plastic that's being used nowadays for COVID. Let's worry about plastic, more simply than lighting, you know, so...
Well...
I would just...
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say a couple of things. One is, I've got two points to make. One is, I do take great pride in the fact that we're a dark sky community. I know there's not a lot of dark sky communities, even in the entire country. So I take great pride, and matter of fact, my wife and I were coming home from the airport and the Uber driver was, made the comment, he goes, "Well, it's dark coming in here." I said, "Well, we're a dark sky community," as he's driving through the subdivision. And I take pride in it. And I've also been very dark sky friendly, and when Bell Tower put up the lights, the property manager there redid all the lights at Bell Tower, and I was the chairman of the planning commission at the time, and I received all sorts of information from the Environmental Committee, and I, but I didn't need it, because I already knew. I took a drive over there, and I contacted everybody on the planning commission, all of my commissioners, and I said, "I want you to go take a look over..." I didn't sway them as to what they should do. "Go over, I'd just like to go take a look at this, because it's going to be an agenda item in the next month." And every one of them at the meeting was on the same page. And I made sure that this manager at the Bell Tower property conformed to the dark sky ordinance, and it was an expense for him to do that. But that was his problem. He went ahead and put those lights in without contacting us and letting us know that he was doing it. You know, it was one of those situations where he thought it'd be better to ask for forgiveness rather than permission. We made sure that he changed those bags at his cost. So, you know, I'm extremely friendly with the dark sky, and, you know, it's, 3,000 K is the requirement to become a dark sky. We meet those requirements, I don't see an issue with that.
Well, I think our standards need to be better. You know, just because IDA says that's good enough, I think we need to be the leader. We need to do more. And, you know, just going back to another comment I want to make, and ComEd and Design Lights Consortium are still oversimplifying the environmental dimensions of outdoor lighting by focusing on one factor, energy consumption. They are completely ignoring other important environmental impacts that are made worse by white LEDs, like I said, by sky glow, ecological, and potential human health impacts. It's got to be a balancing act between your money and energy savings and the environmental impact of what's this going to do to us. Plus, why is this being rushed through on this voting today without even the board knowing more, getting more information, getting... Why is this being rushed through today? Why does it have to be done today?
Let me ask this question. How many dark sky communities are there in the state?
I think it's three.
In the state? How many?
That's it, the country.
Okay. So you're saying there's not many in the state? We're the only one in the state?
Oh, no.
Oh, no. There's more than, there's more than us.
There's a lot now in the country.
So...
Especially Arizona's guts.
Okay. But, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about in the state of Illinois. How many are in the state of Illinois?
I believe there's three.
Well, I, I would, I would argue if there's only three, that I would argue that as far as being a leader, I think we are a leader.
Mm-hmm.
Seriously. If, if you were to tell me there was 4,000, I would say, "Well, we're not a leader." When there's three, I would say we are a leader.
Yeah, there's two downstate, I'm pretty sure.
There's no rush to get this done other than one, than two things. We want to set a standard. We've become friendly to setting this standard almost. And we have until December 1st to file for the ComEd grants, if I'm not mistaken, to obtain that $20,000 rebate. We don't do it by then, it's fine. We want to throw $20,000 away and just extend this for a few more days.
Okay. What, maybe...
We have a standard that says 3,000 K right now in our, in our book. And we're, we're debating how we're interpreting what CCT means. Because I can pull up IDA specs that say 3,000 Kelvin of CCT is sanctioned. So we're debating that right now. That's the standard we're trying to get to.
The only thing else I would want to point out in tar, in addressing Trustee Sweets' concern about timing, is that we have received notice from our contractors that the current streetlights that we have in the village will know that those fixtures are no longer going to be manufactured starting next year. And we get, we, we have replacements throughout the year that do require these to be replaced. And it's important that we get clear direction from the board on what that standard is going to be for replacement.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it's not like they're going to fall out of the sky either.
I'm going to call on Trustee Rogers. She wants to speak.
Uh, Trustee Rogers, do you want to speak?
I do. First, I want to say, I, I think that Trustee Gray did a great job in researching this and his due diligence on this. It, it really is spot on. I agree with everything that he's saying. I will always, as former chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I will always lean towards Trustee Caprio and Trustee Brock. As chairman of those committees now, I support our police officers. They believe that 3,000 is worth. And in, in today's time, I, I just feel like that they're right, that 3,000 K is, is definitely the way to stay.
Um, I would like to, before, I believe Mr. Luganville is on the phone. And if we can see if he wants to make a comment. Before we do that, going back to this December date, what are you talking about?
December 3rd. When, when is ComEd...
The ComEd grant deadline?
Yeah. ComEd has their, their energy efficiency program. They're offering actually an additional 25% on top of the existing grant opportunity. So the deadline is, I believe it's December 3rd that we have to have our final application in. But before you can do a final application, you do have to do a pre-application first.
When is that due?
Um, I'm assuming that it's going to take about two weeks to get the pre-application in and complete it and get that approved before we can get the final. So if you kind of go backwards, then, you know, we're getting towards kind of the, the mid-November timeframe. And in addition, our lighting contractor, Lyons Pinner, had mentioned that actually the, the 70-watt high-pressure sodiums, which is the, the fixtures that we would be typically using in the subdivisions, is no longer available. And that was the letter that was included from GE, that they're no longer making it. So we actually have a light right now that was damaged by lightning that we're waiting to determine which direction we need to go as far as what light source, what light color, so that we can actually replace that light as well, too.
Well, I'd like to make a comment. So if something regarding this 25% bonus of application, whatever. So unless something has changed since 3 o'clock this afternoon, a final application, yes, it has to be done by the beginning of December. But that means you're, what you're getting that bonus for, those lights have to be installed. It's not just a piece of paper flying across somebody's desk. So that is not true information.
I believe the, the application, because you have to get everything pre-approved from ComEd before you can even order the lights.
Well, you know Mary Jo from the, she's in charge of this whole incentive program. I talked to her at the beginning of the year. I talked to her again at 3 o'clock. And I asked her, "What's with this bonus of 25% that has to be done?" She said, "Yes, the final application has to be done by the first week in December. But that means all your materials have to be installed and in working order." And that's, and that's for her. And she also said, "This same program is going to continue to 2021."
And the, the lighting program, most likely, I mean, they, they have been kind of rotating it through the years. They're, but again, in order, before you can actually order anything, and there, there are stipulations, before you can even order your equipment and your, or your materials, you have to get everything approved. So...
Right. But it's not going to get, you're not going to get a 20-some percent bonus by having an application in by the beginning of December because you have no materials and you don't have any working lights. You don't have that installed. And that was, I asked her twice to verify that because I've been getting different information from staff.
So we'll, we'll verify that, that information. That's not the same information that we're receiving. I don't know this lady's, I've never communicated with this lady who Trustee Sweets is talking about. I guess I just want to summarize a couple of points. Is, you know, we've started this process, I think about the beginning of the year, I think was when we...
It was actually...
Was it in 2019?
It was almost probably around 2019.
Okay. So, and at that time, we were trying to get going on the ComEd Energy Efficiency Program as well. And at that time, you guys were mandated back to the Environmental Committee to take a look at this and to make some recommendations and do some additional research. Unfortunately, with COVID, that slowed things down quite a bit, which is why we're sitting here tonight, because we were trying to get these test lights in conjunction with working with the Environmental Committee so that you guys could see each one of these lights in the built environment, not just out here behind the park, but in a neighborhood as well, which is why we put them in, down the street. So at this point, I think that what I'm asking for is, we do need clear direction from the board on what your policy decision's going to be. Because we need to make sure that we're following it, and we're consistently following those things. And I don't know what else we could possibly bring to the table other than what we've already brought in terms of the actual lights being installed here, which didn't cost the village anything. Obviously, they were delayed because the manufacturers shut down because of COVID. But you've seen them in the built environment now. You know what they look like. So those are kind of just some of the summary points I wanted to share with the board from the staff perspective.
Can we please see if Mr. Luganville would like to make a comment, or if he wants, needs to answer any questions?
Go ahead, man.
Mr. Luganville, you should be able to speak now if he unmutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments. I, there's been a lot of information discussed in the last 10 or 15 minutes. And I have to say that the audio is a little difficult to understand, so I won't be able to address everybody. And I don't know the names, so I apologize for, except for a few of you, I don't know most of your names. So I apologize. It'll be kind of generic. I would like to be able to address you directly, but I won't be able to. I am not a spokesperson for IDA. I was formerly on the Board of IDA. I was in fact the person who originally proposed the creation of the Dark Sky Community Program in 2001. So I am familiar with it. But I, again, am not a spokesman for IDA. I want to clarify a little bit, though, my understanding of what IDA means when they say a lighting, a light meets their, their recommendations for dark sky communities. The 3,000 Kelvin light, which I want to point out, is formerly on their website and no longer on their website. But when they had that number 3,000, that was intended as the minimum standard to meet their recommendations for dark sky quality. So keep that in mind. That is not, you shouldn't take that as a gold star, or this is what IDA want. That was the minimum standard. IDA, even when they had that standard on their website, had it clearly stated that 3,000 K or, or lower impact were, was what their recommendation was. That's number one. Number two, that document which used to say that about 3,000 K or less has been removed from the IDA website. I went looking for it yesterday, and it is no longer there. I had a link to it in my web documents, and that link was broken. And I had to dig around the website before I could find that they had removed it. I understand that the reason they have removed it is because the IDA Technical Committee, that I am familiar with, though I'm still not speaking for IDA or the Technical Committee, is re-discussing the way they word their recommendations to try to resolve this ambiguity which you are grappling with right now. This lack of clarity, I should say, about what is better for dark skies and what their standards are. So I hope that helps clarify. It would be helpful if, I suppose, if this is really of great concern that we've had IDA speaking here rather than myself or IDA. But I think that's a good understand, a reliable understanding of what IDA's requirements are. IDA, by the way, also would support if you ask them about the PC Amber or the 2200 Kelvin, all of which are lower impact than the 3,000 Kelvin standard that you are considering. All are recommended by IDA, all supported by IDA. Number two, or number three, those, the impacts on dark skies of these other lights, 2,200 Kelvin or PC Amber, are unambiguously better for dark skies. IDA does not dispute that. You, somebody in the discussion said there was some disagreement. I don't believe there is any disagreement among dark sky scientists or the, the, the research that makes it clear that these yellower lights are lower impact. If there is a concern about brightness levels, in other words, if you feel that a light looks too dim, that's a separate measure of the light. That is not related to the spectrum. That is related to the amount of wattage or the number of lumens you have. And that is, I understand, not under discussion at this point. We are trying to discuss what spectrum is the best for protecting dark skies. There has been a lot of discussion about what is the requirement of the Homer Glenn Lighting Code. The Lighting Code, when you have ambiguous or contradictory or unclear terminology, as I think we are encountering here in the discussion about what might be the equivalent if an LED is used instead of your former 75 or 70-watt high-pressure sodium, there is no question some ambiguity in the wording on the, on the, in the ordinance. I want to pause briefly and ask if my audio is coming through without too much breaking up.
It's coming through fine.
Thank you. I have a poor internet connection, so sometimes my audio is poor. So, the, um, the ambigu, when you have ambiguity or confusion in the wording of a code, to me, it always helps to go back and look at the purpose that was expressed by the community when it adopted, when it adopted the ordinance. And this is in the large attestation section at the top of your ordinance. It's not included in the Lighting Code, but the attestation section actually lays out what the, what the village was trying to do when it adopted its code. And when I read that section, it's pretty clear that the purpose in adopting your Lighting Code was for protecting dark skies first and foremost. So if we are confused about when we look for what the equivalent regarding dark skies is, should it be 3,000 Kelvin, or should it be some other spectrum? I think the, the, the amount of impact on dark skies ought to be of very prime consideration for the, for the Board to look at. And I don't think that's ambiguous when I read that section of the, that section of your ordinance, adopting ordinance. It's not for me, of course. I don't mean to presume, to interpret what the purpose of the village is. I'm only looking at the documents that were considered when the Board reviewed and adopted the ordinance back in, I think, 2007. Finally, a comment was made about leadership. I know it was raised by, raised and responded to by a couple of the trustees. And the point was made that there are other dark sky communities in Illinois. And I think actually there is one other in Illinois, if the, if the group is concerned, interested in that. I believe the other one is Hawthorne Woods. I don't think there are three, but any case. The comment was made that you are leading because there are only two of you in the state. And I wonder, there's another way of comparing, establishing your leadership role. And rather than, and one might be to compare it to all of the hundreds or thousands of other municipalities or communities around the state, which do not have lighting ordinances at all, and have not, as far as I know, expressed any interest in protecting their dark skies. You can compare to those and say you are leading with respect to those, and that is absolutely a valid comparison. But if you want to compare to whether you're leading in dark skies itself, rather than leading amongst the group of people or communities that aren't concerned about dark skies, you might look at the other dark sky communities and look at which ones are doing better. And rather than meeting the minimum standard, I think it might be considered a valid way of considering whether you're leading or not, is whether you're doing better than the minimum standards and whether you're doing better than, as, as well as you can within the other needs that you have for the community in terms of safety and utility. That's really, I think, all the points I wanted to make. I'm certainly glad to answer any questions if I can help to clarify. I understand it's a difficult choice to make, to, to move forward into the era of LEDs. A lot of communities are grappling with this problem. So thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, too. Appreciate it. If this does end, or December 4th is a cutoff, or December 3rd, whatever it is, we do need to make a, a decision of whether we are going to or we're not going to. I, I went out there, walked it, and even when you look at these pictures here, light transfer is not that big. I mean, you're, you're looking at the 3,000, the 2200, and the PC Amber. PC Amber, it, it really is, it's nothing. It's like a nightlight.
Well, let's just take a look at, and that's why I asked, I said, "Why wasn't somebody from Public Safety, why wasn't the chairs from Environment Committee out here when this was taking place? This would have been a great thing to be watching this happen." They said it was, "Oh, it's a last minute thing." But they had to contact somebody if it was going to be a last minute thing. But take a look, take a look at your three, you know, what is, you know, I don't want to be suspicious, but take a look at your 3,000 K and how big that curb looks compared to where you're standing. And look how small the curb looks at a PC Amber, or even in between. It does, was it closer to make it look brighter and then further back? Because those, those curbs are not the same. If that person was standing, if you measured 10 feet from the curb, every one of those pictures should have been 10 feet. But the curb on 3,000 K is really big compared to PC Amber.
You know, one thing we also have to take into consideration, I don't know if Chris can hear me, maybe he doesn't know. The proximity between light fixtures will also determine how much light pollution there is. And that is on the Dark Sky website. I just couldn't get to it quick enough. But there's a certain proximity. In my subdivision, there are a block or a block and a half, maybe two blocks between light fixtures. Here at the park, 75, 100 feet between light fixtures. And they're projecting a retainer area of the street. There are other considerations that I think do not serve the 3,000 K justice in the conversation that we're having. Because if you have a light every mile, or you have a light every 50 feet, it's going to make a difference in how much light pollution is coming out of those fixtures. These fixtures are downlighted. They're very, very projected. It's just my personal preference. The Board can decide.
No, I, that's a great point. And, and, you know, I, I'd just like to clarify a few things. We are talking about streetlights. We're talking about the streetlights that we are going to put out there. Now, these are going to be the standard, yes, for developers coming in who are going to build new subdivisions and put in streetlights, or for commercial areas where they might put it into...
Parking lots.
Parking lots and things of that nature. Thank you. But we are not, to Mr. Luganville's point, we are not changing our dark sky initiative. We are trying to stick to it, as well as trying to stick to some ComEd programs. We are good fiscal stewards here. Why not try to capture money when we can? A standard is a standard. Whether or not you want to say, if you want to get cheeky and say that by, by meeting the minimum standard, we're not doing enough, I would say that, you know, the first and last doctor walking out of a, of a med school are both called doctor. You know, to, to establish a standard is a standard. So, you know, to say that, yes, you hit the standard... to establish a standard is a standard. So, you know, to say that, yes, you hit the standard, but you didn't hit it enough, I think is disingenuous. We are trying very, very diligently, I think, to try to be as true as we can to the initial, the reason for having the dark skies. So, we are talking about just doing this on the, on the streetlights. We are not talking about cracking open all the net lumens per acre, spillage, all of those other things that make my head spin, to be frank. We are not talking about any of that. We are talking about a standard for the streetlights. This ticks a lot of boxes. This goes beyond, you know, just the Environment Committee or Public Safety. This is everybody's thing, you know? This is going to affect everybody in the village. So, you know, there has to be a lot, a lot more considered in this, I think. So, again, I point back to, and to Mr. Luganville's point about, he went on to IDA's website and can't find those documents. I was on there just yesterday, and I was able to find several things that pointed to 3,000 being the standard. And yes, I saw the same exact information that he just mentioned. It is, you know, they say nothing above 3,000. These are 3,000. It does mention that there are other alternatives below 3,000, and I'm certainly aware of those. And as we're aware of those, looking at this, our monitors right now, we know that there's a 2,200 and these PC Amber LEDs. We know there's a bevy of other things. We know also, though, that we have the opportunity to take advantage of a ComEd program to both save energy in the long run and some money in the short term by using one that ticks the box, that happens to tick both IDA's box as well as ComEd's box, so.
My comment, trustee Gray, is that you're not going to get a 25% bonus. The lady is in charge of this program, and she's not talking about...
Maybe not this year, but we will next year.
Well, if you...
We will next year, and we do have to set a standard.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, we don't have to force an issue tonight.
But we do have to come up with some standard so that we can tell Lyons Pinner or Pinner Lyons what fixtures we're going to go forward with, as far as them going out and servicing the network of lights that we do have in town right now. Now, you're right. The HPSs are not going to go away tomorrow. You know, it'd be great if we can take advantage of this opportunity with ComEd. I really would like to see this thing come to a head, preferably tonight. If that doesn't happen, we're going to have to get over this bridge. We have to establish a standard. Whether or not, you know, the ComEd saving money is the, is the real push for it or not, we are still going to have to establish a standard. It does sound like there's a lot of resistance to it.
I look at it this way. We already hit the standard. That's what Dark Sky Community was all about, is getting the light down. We got the light down where the first one, State of Illinois, to be approved by it. And I look at it this way. No matter where you're at right now, something gets better every year. They're saying in a couple more years, they're building cars that'll fly right now in Florida. So, they can get from Tampa to so-and-so in 45 minutes. Everything's changing. And if we're good where we're at, and we have an opportunity to save some money, and we have an opportunity to change some of the lights so everything in the, in the village is uniform, I think we go for it. And as for the 25%, if they lose the 25%, they're still getting $21,000. And we're getting something that's unified. And like I said, you know, I've always, I agree with trustee Backle. I like dark sky. I really do. But, the older I get, the harder it is for me to see the streets. And I don't want to ask my wife all the time to drive because she drives like, she drives slow. So, I want to be able to get from A to B without, you know, when they were doing 159th Street, there was one time I almost went off the road, but the car in front of me did, so I didn't. So, it's just, you know, the darkness. I'm looking at these three, and when I took a walk around the park, and I saw the PC Amber, I understand, but to me, it's a big bug light. It doesn't really light up anything. It gives you, if you want to know from point A to point B what you're looking at, you can do it. And if, for all these years, we've had 3,000 K, and we've got it to what International Dark Sky wants, I say we don't fix something that's not broken.
But it was not a 3,000 K LED, which is a big difference.
Well, but the dark sky approves it. So, what happens, what happens right now if we go, okay, let's go to the PC Amber? And in a year and a half, they say, whoop, well, we got a new one, and this one's much better. It's, when does it stop?
Well, I guess they're going to have to change out all of 159th, because that's all high-pressure sodiums, if they're going away so quickly.
Well, that's why, at 159th, at that point, I think that's why we cut back on some of the lights, because we didn't want it all bright like that, and the state wouldn't accommodate what we were looking for. So, if we change it, we got to deal right now with ComEd. And Sharon, I really don't, if I walk this park or drive this park, and in the corner of the property on the east side, where you start seeing all the, everything that's been put up there, and they've got the PC Amber there, they've got the 2,000 K and the 3,000, and all of them are LED. There's not a night and day difference between the 3,000 or 2,200. It's a little bit darker for the 2,200. But when I saw the PC Amber, and that was right next to a 3,000, it just didn't put off any light. And the picture that I'm looking here, someone could be standing four feet behind that light pole, and the only reason I know it's a light pole there is because the sign is lit up from the picture being taken. You'd never even know anybody was there.
Well, with the glare, you're going to get the same thing with a 3,000 K LED. You didn't...
Well, only if, only if I look up at it. I mean, I don't want to argue with you. I understand your passion for this, and I don't disagree with you. But, right now, with what's going on and what ComEd is offering, and I think if we start doing this, you are going to lose a lot of people coming in here to want to build anything. And as for the housing end of it, I mean, it gets harder and harder for them, and it also makes, like trustee Gray said, we're constantly changing our rules. If we had a rule, stick to it. If you don't stick to it, and you just keep changing, I don't know, then we might as well borrow some more money and just go ahead and redo the lights.
Can I get just one more point? I don't need it. Trustee Pasmino and I were just talking about lighting. And I do not go to Pebble Creek, but if you look at Pebble Creek and you look at Twin Lakes Survivor, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but there are little darker communities in the Central Darpa Creek. They were original subdivisions when Homer Glen was being built. You go to Cedar Brook, you look at the PC Amber or the 2,200, part of these beautifully lit homes that are light in color, two-story, you know, it's a totally different perspective on how you're going to see the light. So, with new subdivisions coming up, even, you know, the new townhome subdivision, the architecture has changed, and the light is going to look different in those communities. In my, in my subdivision, I'm not sure what I have, HPS or if I have a PC Amber. There's lights that are out in my subdivision. I wouldn't even know they're out because it doesn't look like I have light in my subdivision. I only noticed it when I drive by 15 times and said, oh, that is actually networked. And I've hauled them in. So, to me, it really is, you can't just base this on each subdivision, on a whole. You have to base, I mean, you have to base it on a whole, but it's still a little different in every community.
You're right. You're right. So, and I agree with trustee Gray, too. This is something that we just need to vote on a standard. Let's, let's just, yes or no, is this going to happen? And this way, if it is, then at least I can get the papers out. They'll follow up on the rest of it. If we lose the 25, then we lose the 25, and that's our fault. But I would like, we already have the motions on it. I would like to have the clerk call the roll call.
Wait, mayor, I'm sorry, it's Beth. Can you, can you clarify what the motion is?
Yeah, you need to make a motion. Is it going to be the 3,000 K?
All right. Is there a motion, is there a motion accepting either 3,000 K, 2,200 K, or PC Amber LED? So, what we have to do right now is we have to get a consensus from the Board of what they're looking for, and then we can actually vote on it. But the motion right now is to choose between the 3,000 K, 2,200 K, or the PC Amber LED.
And I believe trustee Caprio actually did a motion for 3,000. I don't know if it was seconded, though.
Did it?
It was seconded before he...
Oh, yeah. No, it's...
Trustee Caprio seconded. Before trustee Caprio clarified that it was for 3,000.
Right. And it was Caprio for the, for the motion, and Pasmino for the second.
So, trustee Pasmino...
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Clarify that you're seconded.
Mayor, I'm sorry. So, is there a first and a second on the 3,000?
Yes.
Yes. No, there's a first.
There's a first and a second.
The second was on the option of the three.
Yeah. We need, we need a second.
Okay.
I'll second the 3,000.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, we've done discussions. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
No.
Trustee Caprio?
Aye.
Trustee Pasmino?
Aye. Motion carries.
Next would be old business. Is there any old, is there any old business? Is there any new business? All right. The next item would be executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing purchase or sale of real property, potential, and pending litigation?
Aye, motion.
Trustee Backle?
House.
Trustee Caprio? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Isaiah, we're going to go into executive session.
Can we take a five-minute?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break.
No action.
And no action will be taken tonight.
We should turn it on.
I know. I know. Yeah, I know. I get that, too. You okay, though?
Maybe eventually.
I know, I get up. I got it like real slow.
I just fall down.
I've done that, too, unfortunately.
Do you come out to John's?
I got to go to the...
I'm not staying, George.
All right, Sharon. Thank you. You, too, Mike. See you later.
See you later.
Good night, George.
You, too, Mike.